So, welcome everyone. We have several people on our screen, but we do have Mr. Elder via phone conference. We're having some technical difficulties. So I will make sure that we can hear him loud and clear through this. And we'll make it work because it's 2020 and that's what we do during these times is we make everything work. And so I'm always happy to do that. So, Mr. Elder, I'll turn it over to you. Oh, I have to, I have to get the American flag out, Mr. Elder. So just give me one second. Okay, you're good?
Okay, so in alphabetical order, Dr. Christine Dawson.
Present.
William Elder, President.
Yes.
John Farrell.
Yes.
Roger Fidel.
President.
Lisa Hogan.
Yes, here.
Kimberly Henkel.
She's absent this evening.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay. Thomas Kurtz. Thomas here. Okay. Kevin Bostrander, I saw him. And Jeff Riggi.
Here.
Okay. So we have seven present, two absent.
And Mizzor is there? Yes?
Yes, I'm here.
Is there? Yes. And Mr. Fortrell, Akash, you are there?
Yes.
Thank you. Mizzor, I will turn the programs over to you so that you can announce the presentation for the evening and introduce the individuals, please.
Great. So we do have three just quick updates, more or less, tonight for presentations in this month of December for that. So my, the first one I'll talk about is I wanted to give everyone online and to all the board a COVID update of what has been going on. For those community members that are watching, every single positive is on our website and every time we send out new information, it is there as well on that. Obviously, like other schools in the area, we've had to pivot to remote learning at our high school. And I know there's a lot of questions out there as to why that was done. But it was done for a number of reasons, but most importantly, it was done because of staffing. I always want to make sure, and I emphasized in the letter that went out last week, it was not because of an outbreak, it was not because we had too many cases, it was because when you have staff members that either become positive or are in contact with a student who was positive, there are times where one positive can wipe out five to 10 adults. And if you have too many of those in a row, you now are short-staffed for that. I think our goal has always been we keep as many buildings open as possible. Our teachers have done a phenomenal job of creating pivot plans to be able to switch to remote learning very quickly. They are teaching from school for the most part unless situations make them the need to stay home for that. So we know that with our high school students, they're home three days a week, remote learning, and they're in school two days a week. So the switch to virtual is something they're very used to right now for that. And by us going to remote at the high school allows us to maintain staffing at the other five buildings in order to keep them in school because we will now have extra aides and things that can be shifted to other buildings to support that if we have other cases come up this week. So that is really have, has been our goal. I do get a lot of questions on what's the magic number before you close? And there is no magic number. It really is on a case-by-case basis on what is affected by that and what is working in that area. So that is really the update there. I thought that the governor today would have talked about microclusters in our region. And as of this morning's or this afternoon's news conference, it does not look like anywhere in the capital region has a microcluster. I'm saying that at 6:43 on Monday night because I'm never sure when that is going to change. And I could be emailing the board or the community, you know, even as early as tonight with that change if that were to happen. But as of right now, we do not believe that is there. So we have already planned for testing in the yellow, orange, or red zone. Our community members have already received letters on that, and we have a very many people wishing to volunteer, both as students and their families volunteering their students or as staff members. So I'm confident that we will have the 20% or the 25 or 30% that will be needed to remain open as long as possible for that, in that case, for that. So, you know, I feel like we're progressing. I always am so thankful of our school nurses and our district nurse, Christie Tracy. They work very hard with families to try to get them to understand what this is and the things around that. You know, people get upset when they hot, when they're positive. And we try to assure them that they won't be the first one that's told us, and they probably will not be the last. And we're just working with each family. We're maintaining confidentiality of each case on our end. So that way it helps comfort them during these times for that. So we have four in-school days left this week for our K-8 students. And then on Monday, we're doing a full, a social emotional learning day with different ideas at each building on what that means and what that looks like. So I look forward to our January update when Mr. Dawkins can talk about that day, and maybe we'll invite another member along. Obviously, one of the outcomes of all this is that our board meetings have gone remote for at least this month. And we will always update you on the website if they will continue to be remote. Really, this is in the abundance of caution, and it's also at a point where we want to make sure schools stay open. So in order to do that, we really need less than 20 minutes of contact time as adults with other people in the room. And also, although the board members are, are members of the community, the school community, they are not in the buildings often. And so therefore, we're trying to keep the buildings as safe as possible for our students. And so we're going to remote there for that. So to ensure that our buildings stay open. We are always here to take questions or comments around COVID. You can simply email me if you're in the community or Brissy Tracy, and we're going to be putting even a special email on. So that way, over vacation, any parent that runs into a problem, has a question, they can contact us via that email, and someone will get back to them almost immediately on that. So we want to make sure we stay in touch, but we also want to make sure people get the rest and vacation they need when we go into vacation on Tuesday, December 22nd for that. So at that point, I don't know if any board members have any specific questions along where we are in our update of this. I think they're shaking their head no. So we're going to move on to our capital project. And with us this evening, we have Bill McMorty, our project manager, who now is a pro at this as well, since we do all of our meetings virtual too, to keep him not in place whenever that is. Tonight and during the board meeting, we are approving several things that would be taking place over this summer. And as the board knows, but with the community, we wanted to make sure that this was a separate project. So that way, anything that we missed in the project or other add-ons that we could do with the approved $58 million, we were able to do that. So I'm going to ask Bill. I'll mute myself and I'll ask Bill McMorty to unmute and just give a quick summary to everyone on what is involved for this summer.
So the summer we're going to take on, you know, we had a discussion before about some, some cost savings that we realized in the project. So we actually went out to bid and to go over some of those items. And one of them is probably three of them in the high school that we're able to award with the add-alternates are the high school ceilings and lights in the Bulldog area. Remember, those were done in the last project, which now is, you know, 20 plus years ago. And also the flooring in that area, the, we had a rubber floor in that area, which has started to wear over time. So we're going to replace that with the VCT floor that'll match the rest of the both, of rest of the high school that we have just done in the remainder of the capital project. And also the two stair towers that are in the high school itself that go to the second floor addition, they're starting to show some wear with the, the radial tile, which was popular 20 years ago. But does show dirt over the years. It's very hard to clean. So we, we're going to replace that in the project. I think one of the, the bigger components of the project is the ability to do playgrounds and replace the playgrounds at the existing elementary schools at all four schools. So at each school, remember, in the beginning of the program, one of our first projects, we did playgrounds at Harrison and Moreau. So we're actually going to be able to replace all the playgrounds across the board at the elementary schools, including the 2K playgrounds at Ballard and Tanglewood, which are some, of some significant size in the areas that are all woodchips out there, along with all the other existing playgrounds at those schools. That's really the majority of what we're doing this summer. The way we're going to do the playgrounds, they're going to start in April, April or May, whenever we can get the ground unfrozen. And we're going to work right through the fall. There's eight different playgrounds that we'll be doing. So we're going to actually bring the materials in, store them behind the old bus garage as they're manufactured, and then the contract will be working out of there as a staging area. And we're going to go school by school to get those playgrounds installed. We'll be starting at Tanglewood this year because we're, if, if we have summer programs, that's the building that we would have them at. So we want to get out of there first, and then we'll make our way around to the other three elementary schools. So that's kind of in a nutshell, what we're doing this summer. We're adding some additional parking spaces at Moreau. I think it's 17 or so, plus or minus. So that was one of the other key items that we're, we're doing in the building.
Thank you, Mr. Forty. I know that several members had a couple of questions in regard to some of the purchase orders. And the idea that the playgrounds is, is a lofty approval because of the cost. But I'm, I'm so thrilled that we're able to do them in a project prior to them having to be taken offline. But we do have at least three that within the next year would probably be of non-use. And we have between Ballard and Tanglewood, we have issues with the ground. We have pricker bushes that are, are moving up, and so we have to really dig them out and move them in order for that to happen there on that. So this is, you know, I don't know, Mr. McMorty, how long playgrounds last, but it feels like it'll put us in a good position for quite some time. Other questions about anything coming up this evening?
Real quick question, Christine. Is any of the additional lighting, any of the other lighting in the senior high school going to be addressed at all?
The lighting in the senior high school, Mr. McMorty?
Yeah, there is, Mr. Elder, they're on the second floor of the addition from the last project in the corridors. We're really sticking to the quarters. That will be done.
Wonderful. Good. Little by little, they all get to saying, great.
Yeah. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, then the last one, I'm turning over to Mr. Dawkins with a labor of love with the policy committee on the code of conduct. And we always have to bring the code of conduct to a public hearing. And so Mr. Dawkins is going to talk about the next steps with that.
Yeah. So we've been, we've been working on the code of conduct for quite a while now. In fact, we started last year. The code of conduct is a 49-page document. So as you can imagine, going through that document with a fine-tooth comb involves lots of eyes and lots of time. And I really want to thank the committee for the work that they did. And especially Mrs. Hogan and Dr. Dawson for, for going through that and making a lot of really great suggestions, updating language, working with our principals and making sure that our code of conduct policy is inclusive and reflects the values of 2020. It definitely is a document that needed to be addressed and updated. We also worked with the New York State School Boards Association to make sure that the language was consistent with language that's being used across the state. So we appreciate their, their assistance as well. We did have our, our meeting this evening before the board meeting. And you'll see on the agenda that the code of conduct, which is policy 5300, is now up for hearing. And so the process in order to adopt the new code of conduct is that it has to be made available for a public comment before we can adopt it. So because we are virtual, what we're going to do is we are going to post a link to that cleaned up, finalized document on our website under the Board of Education section of the webpage. And anyone in the public can go and review that document. And if they have comments or questions about it, then they can direct those comments or questions to our Board of Education email. They can also email me with questions as well, and I will make sure to share that with our policy committee. And so that will be up through the end of the week. And what we will do is once we have processed all of the comments and shared that with the board and responded, the code of conduct 5300 will be back on the agenda for our January board meeting, and that's when it will be adopted by the board event. And I don't know if, if Mrs. Hogan or Dr. Dawson, if you have anything to add to that.
I just want to echo the, oh, sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Christine Dawson has a comment.
I just want to echo the gratitude to the, and also to the high school and middle school administrative teams who weighed in on this, and Mr. Dawkins did a substantial amount of work. But I think it, I think it much better, as you said, reflects the, the values of the district. And, and there are some really important updates that we've made to it. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm really, I'm particularly happy with the reflection of the restorative work that's been happening at the secondary level especially. It really kind of integrates that, that work and the approach that we have in the view. And so, so I'm especially excited about that. That's it.
Okay, great. So, Mr. Elder, I think we have no more questions on that. Do you want me to just introduce the committee reports? Yes. So Kevin, I'm not sure, from Bosse's, if there's any reports to update people on.
No, no, there isn't. Just everything's, just like it is here, it's there. Same world, just a different page.
Thank you, Mr. Bostrander. And then we did review the policies that are in the read, the first read here. I don't know if Kevin, during this point, you want to talk about that one policy, or you want to wait until the meeting? Or Christine or Lisa have anything else on the policy committee?
Do you want me to talk about it now?
You can. Yeah, that would be perfect.
Yeah. So one of the policies that we reviewed is budget transfers. And as it stands now, the Board of Education approves every budget transfer prior to making the transfer. And looking at other schools, a few schools, the superintendent would approve the budget transfers and then inform the, typically inform the board later. So using Saratoga as an example, the superintendent approves the budget transfer. And then at the next board meeting, provides the board with the information regarding the budget transfers. They don't have a limit on it. Which district is it? I think it, Queensberry, I think it is. Has a limit of $100,000. So you need board approval for any budget transfer over $100,000. We were, you know, as a committee, we were discussing cutting that in half, $50,000. Because as it stands now, the superintendent makes any change orders on the capital project up to $50,000. So in an effort to be consistent, the reason for allowing the superintendent to do it is typically budget transfers occur later on in the school year, not so much in the beginning of the school year. Usually there's money in all the, all the accounts. But when things change, sometimes you, you do have to react. And this year is a perfect example of it, you know, with all the COVID materials that we had to purchase that, you know, nobody was budgeting for this time last year. So it just, you know, it gives the district some flexibility while still keeping the, the school board apprised of what's going on. There are, by the way, there are laws about budget transfers. You cannot transfer out of program into capital. So in other words, I can't, you know, take money away from the education side to buy new equipment, say. But you can take money out of, say, building and grounds and put it into programming. Does that kind of make sense?
When this was brought up at our policy committee, Ms. Hogan and I didn't feel like we could make a, any kind of call, just the two of us. We definitely thought it needed to go to a full board discussion. So that's why, that's where we are.
And Kevin, you don't need a decision on this tonight. It's more.
I don't need a decision. And, and, you know, obviously, it's worked very well so far. But yes, we're reviewing policies. I, you know, to me, this was a perfect opportunity to introduce something new.
So maybe.
I'd be happy to.
If we do that, then we should probably pull that policy from the first read. Is that correct? Because it no longer will be what we're talking about.
I, well, we can do that, or at least they could read the other language to make sure we understand it. And then we can update it in the second read, and we can always go to a third read if we need to.
Okay. Yeah, I think we probably would want two reads of a, if it's changed.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fair. No, it's, it's actually a very small paragraph.
Exactly.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I think our students are up next, Bill?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm not sure who's going first, Annika or Jenna, but I know you two are both professionals at speaking online. So whoever's up, unmute.
I will go first. I'm doing, okay. First, in high school on November 19th, the Mohican Chapter.
So, Annika, don't be offended, but I muted you. Oh, yeah, I don't think that I muted you because you're, you may have to turn your camera off in order to speak because you're a little slow.
Okay. In the high school on November 19th, the Mohican Chapter of the National Honor Society inducted 75 members, 71 through eight separate social districts, and for virtually. Next to the hard work of Caitlin Morgan, Caitlin Hogan Morgan and her team Missy Smith and Mary Man. The induction was safe, smoothly run, and very much appreciated by our community. Eight staff members took portion of the first virtual day on November 25th to prepare a Thanksgiving meal for a family in significant need and deliver it before work stopped for the holiday. It looks like a new and likely expanded tradition has been born at South High based on how wonderful an experience it was. On December 7th, December 2nd, seven staff members partook in an embedded workshop day to complete work for our first wellness day in conjunction with the district's social emotional learning initiative taking place on December 21st. The events of the day are a closely guarded secret at this point. But suffice to say that the design team in charge of the high school is very excited about what is planned for students and colleagues. On December 21st, the high school will host its first wellness day. Those are closely guarded, but students and staff are encouraged to get comfortable, get flexible, and break out your ugly sweaters. Sneak peek, be sure to catch a vocal point concert at 1:45. Oliver Winch, they recently did two HSA fundraisers that went very well. It seems that a lot of people liked the Saratoga Olive Oil sale, and students sold many bottles. And thankfully, they didn't break a single one. Tomorrow is Ugly Sweater Day for Group One students, and Thursday will be Ugly Sweater Day for Group Two. On December 21st, the middle school will also host its first wellness day. All activities are aligned with our efforts around self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Happy holidays from everyone at OWWMS. At Moreau, our No Place for Hate Committee has an ongoing Christmas kind talent taking place from November 30th through Friday, December 18th. Classes are challenged to do something for another class, a group, or each other each day. This has been a fun event and will be a great tradition in the future. Our homeschool association added Saratoga Olive Oil to our annual wreath fundraiser this year, and it was a great success. Kirk said pickup happened last week over a two-night period. The Moreau Student Council held a canned food drive just before Thanksgiving and awarded the top class for the popcorn party. We had well over 1,000 food items collected and donated to the Moreau Community Center. On Saturday, December 12th, Moreau will be welcoming Santa to our school for a drive-through celebration from noon to two. This event is being put on by our HSA and is sure to please.
Can you hear me okay? Do you need to be to turn my camera off? Okay, there's a lot, so just bear with me. At Ballard, Grace 3, 4, and 5 participated in the CBT simulation for math this week. It was a good experience for our students and was ultimately a successful endeavor. Ballard's No Place for Hate Committee has been formed. Our pledge signing is being redesigned, and we will soon have an entire hallway dedicated to our No Place for Hate efforts in history. Student recognition is a part of our pledge and overall highlight. Our Bulldog Pride stickers and Bulldog bucks are used to motivate and recognize students for their academic effort and achievement, behavioral actions, and demonstration of our emphasized values, traits, and habits. Paul Pride Student Events in our school store are part of the eccentric rewards use, but the eccentric rewards are still very visible. The past week, two fourth graders chose Hawaiian-themed photo shoot with Buddy the Bulldog. Check out our Facebook for some of the photos. We have ended the sequential work, the sequential work with the Seven Habits of Happy Kids by Sean Covey. Our focus will turn to reflection, review, and embedding the lessons with terminology in our school culture. Across the building, we are identifying ways to enjoy the holiday season, reimagine some festive traditions, and recognize the need to let the mothers go. Change is sometimes difficult, but we are proud of our community and super excited for the coming holiday spirit days brought forward by our student council. At Tanglewood, the building has been trying to bring some real light and joy to our students through our activities in the physical layout of the building. With that, here are some things we have done. We have weekly Friday spirit days that have been running each week. Last Friday, for instance, was 70s hippies and disco day, and we had a lot of fun. We have a spirit week all this week, and we are really having a blast with this. Our lobby has been decorated with a lot of blue and white.
Our lobby has been decorated with a lot of blue and white icicle lights. Students and their families have been making socks no man at home and bringing them in. And our lobby is now a magical winter wonderland. It is really very cute. The Tanglewood courtyard has a bunch of magical gnomes that have jumped out of nowhere and keep the mischievous things as the weeks go along. Our first No Place For Hate activity is happening this week where students focus on the unique, uniqueness that we all have within us. HSA has purchased wooden bulbs that students have decorated with their names. These have been placed throughout the hallways to brighten up the building. HSA has made gift, gift bags for Friday as we celebrate the end of twenty twenty and send us in the twenty twenty-one. Thank goodness. At Harrison, since twenty twenty has been a unique year, we decided to build a stronger sense of community through the customized group T-shirt. Rather than purchasing different T-shirts for each grade level, our faculty, staff and students are supporting Harrison Ave Bulldog Strong red and white T-shirts. Everyone, including virtual students, look forward to wearing these T-shirts at home on the first Friday of every month. And we would like to thank our homeschool association for making this possible. Throughout the month of December, teachers have been engaging the students in holiday spirit activities. Students are identifying all things that bring them joy. They're finding ways to let up the world with kindness. Third grade students have signed up to be part of Team Rudolph and have made commitment to treat everyone as friends and with a kindness that never ends. Our second graders have been very busy filling out elf applications. They put forth their best effort to convince Santa that when faced with the decision to be naughty or nice, they have chosen to be nice. When asked to explain why they would make good elves, they've offered substantial justification such as I love to give presents, presents. I like to go sledding. I would listen to Santa and I could hide candy canes in the bathroom. Harrison Ave is closing twenty twenty with Holiday Spirit Week. All are encouraged to dress up in green tomorrow for Grinch Day. Wednesday's Elf Day with our ugly or fun festive sweaters. On Thursday, we are wearing our favorite holiday accessories for Reindeer Day. Finally, Friday is when we're looking forward to Polar Express days. We are staying warm in our comfy and cozy pajamas. On behalf of Harrison Ave Elementary School, we would like to wish everyone a happy, healthy holiday season.
Thanks Jenna and Annika for doing that. In last year, through this, we got rid of, just because there were so many things going on, the student announcements, but quite honestly, with the schools open, it's like the highlight of each one of our meetings. So if we have to be virtual, unfortunately, we'll still be inviting you this way, but we look forward to those updates. Mr. Elder, I will turn it over to you.
Yes, again, I echo Ms. Ors' comments. Ladies, thank you very much for your reports. They're always concise and very informative. This is time for our first public forum.
Well, because we're virtual right now, we will take, yep, well, we'll take comments. And they, we can email them to the superintendent or the superintendent secretary. And then we will respond to them in writing if we get any.
Excellent. Thank you for that reminder. Then we'll move into the bigger part of our agenda, our action items. We have an agenda meeting, meeting minutes, items A and B. Are there any comments or questions regarding those?
Nope.
They're being, thank you. They're being done. I would do a roll call vote. May I have one first? Dr. Dawson.
Yes.
Need a motion? You're doing a motion?
We need to do a motion.
I need a motion to approve, but sorry, went too fast.
I, I moved to.
Mr. Farrell.
Yep, that worked.
Okay. I'm sorry, who was second?
Or whichever, who do you have as first?
I have Farrell as first and then Dawson as second.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then my vote is yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, didn't hear. Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes. Not, he's not here.
He's not here? I thought I heard him before, sorry. Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving into school business management, we have consent items C through J. Are there any comments, questions or clarifications?
Yes, I have a couple, Mr. Elder.
Please.
On letter H, we are doing a disposition of assets. And we have social studies textbook, and then we, we did have a long list of antiquated technology equipment. Quite honestly, most of that equipment no longer works. There are some we've been using for parts. Some of the phones on there are completely outdated to our other system. And I believe if Mr. Spot is watching, that he's a hoarder because he likes to save all these things for the Justin case. And now the Justin case is gone because they're, they're, they're so obsolete, we can't use them for anything. So I do know the list looked long and I do know that, you know, there are times when we talk about Chromebooks or, or computers. You always hope that they can be used for other people. We do put those out if there are anything working. But that list is, the word antiquated doesn't even do it justice. That list is just so outdated. That is why we are putting them up for the disposition of assets.
Thank you. Is there any further comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay, they have a motion to approve consent items C through J.
Motion Christine Dawson.
Second, Kevin.
Second by Kevin.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Moving into first, now we have consent items K through L. Is there any comments or questions or clarification?
Nope.
Was there none?
None, yep.
They have a motion to accept those consent items K and L.
Motion Lisa Hogan?
Second, John.
So Lisa and John Farrell?
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. Under non-instructional personnel items M through T, are there any comments or questions or clarification?
I have a couple. For letter M, this is just a revised appointment. We just put it up as an A and it should have been a TA. So I just wanted to make sure we emphasize that. We obviously have a COVID appointment is what we're calling it, but we've made a commitment to try to add cleaners where we can. So that way we keep the building during the day as clean as possible, especially those high-touch areas for that. And then we have two permanent appointments, Marian McIntosh as a TA and then David Ballastero as our custodian at the middle school for those. So those are our three big ones.
Excellent. If there's no further comments or questions, may I have a motion to approve consent items M and through T?
Motion Kevin.
A second?
Second Christine.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. We received our special education recommendation for CPSC and CSE. If there are no comments or questions, I would accept a motion to accept consent item U. Motion?
Roger.
Roger?
Thank you. Second.
Kevin is shaking his head yes.
Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Thank you. I skipped over the educational, here we go, educational items V through W. Is there any comments, questions or clarification?
Just one comment, the middle school drama club virtual presentation. I'm so appreciative of the, the advisors and the students in these clubs for thinking out of the box. We're trying one at the high school and now one at the middle school. And I can't wait to watch both of them. And I do hope that we add this to our drama productions possibly in the future, just because it's always fun to get some of these videos. So I, I do thank Mrs. Ramsey for working on this.
Yes, it sounds, it sounds like it's gonna be a neat thing to be able to view.
Yeah, and then we have our W is our policies and we went through that in the beginning. So really, these will be just a first read. And if we need to change the one based on Kevin's recommendation, then we will add a third read to that one.
Excellent. Does any board member have further comments or questions? They're being done. They have a motion to approve consent items V through W.
Motion, John.
Thank you, John. Second?
Second Lisa?
Thank you, Lisa. Roll call vote. Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Mr. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
And Mr. Riggi?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. In terms of from the board, the board president's standpoint, what I wish and hope that everyone will have a safe and happy holiday season. Stay well with you and your families and hopefully when we get on the other side, things will be a bit calmer. At least that's what I pray for. Thank you. Ms. Ors?
Also, just a couple of things. First, I said I would each meeting give a merger study update. And our next meeting for the merger study is next Monday. As long as the board is okay with that, we will be doing that meeting virtually as well. Very similar to this with also a Q and A Google form. So we can take live questions from people watching the live stream. But I met with Mr. Ward and our two presenters today. And although they like to present in person rather than over the internet, it is with mine and Dan's recommendation that we move to virtual, at least for this meeting, and then we'll regroup. Simply so that way, we can ensure that everyone's getting the right information and then we can keep our buildings as, as quiet as possible. And so this bill, this one would have been in for Edward, and then whenever we come back, we'll be doing tours of that. So six o'clock will be the meeting for the merger study and it will be on our site. That is the joint site. So when you click on merger study, you will see it there for that.
That's where the link will be?
That's where the link will be, yep. And we'll be sending it out to families as well for that. My last thing on my COVID nineteen update is really to our, our families and to the staff and the buildings. At the beginning of the year in September, I used three words, patience, flexibility and grace. And quite honestly, we weren't sure when we'd have to close the first room or the first school. And I really am so proud of the work and the diligence our families are doing to keep our students safe when they're not in school. And also of the work our staff is doing to keep the buildings as safe as possible. We know our kids need to be in school for instruction, for mental health, for all the things that we talk about. And that's going to continue to be our goal. And we hope in the new year, we can start with that same feeling of patience, flexibility and grace. Because it is a new year and there is light at the end of the tunnel when that, how long that tunnel is, we don't know yet. But we're going to stay positive through it. So, you know, thanks to all of our families for really supporting us at every level in the district. Now, Mr. Dawkins, I know you have some information to share as well.
Yeah, and I wrote about this in the Friday report, but I think it really deserves some attention. And so I wanted to talk about it. I wanted to just spend a little time talking about our task program and giving you an update on how that's been going. We are in year two of our task program. We were really excited to get it started last year. It's definitely a program that we've needed. We wanted to bring our students who were pursuing their task degree. We wanted to bring them back into our district so that we could work closely with them and, and, and build relationships with them and ensure that they get through that exam successfully. And in spite of the curveballs that twenty twenty has thrown at us and thrown at Mr. Bullish and his students at the high school. It's really been a success and that continues into this year. Received results from the most recent test, which was November twentieth and twenty-first. And we had four students receive their task diploma. They passed the exam and those students will be invited to participate in our graduation ceremonies in June. These were all first-time test takers, which says a lot for the work that Mr. Bullish has been doing with them, both in-person and virtually. That also is not to leave out the students who were first-time test takers that didn't necessarily pass all of the sections of the task exam. But the, the good thing about the task is that it's broken up into reading, writing, science, math and social studies. And you can pass each one of those sections individually. So once you get through it, you don't have to go back and retake it. So I am glad that it gives those students the opportunity to get through those sections. And we have three students that currently are working on moving through various sections, have passed other ones. And that allows Mr. Bullish to kind of really focus down with those students. Additionally, earlier in the year, at the end of September, we had another student successfully complete the task exam. So, so far this year, we have had five students in that program go on to finish the task program. And they'll be able, they will be invited to participate in graduation in June. So yes, it's a small group, but it is really, really important to talk about the, the chance that that now gives to those students and the doors that that opens for them. When in the past, not graduating from high school may have been one of the only options for them. And so I appreciate their dedication to their education. I appreciate the work that they did because the task exam is not an easy test. It covers a lot of material and requires a significant amount of work for those students to make sure that they're ready to go. And I also really commend Mr. Bullish for his dedication. He's the right person for that position. He builds strong relationships with those kids. Often there are students that, you know, don't always have the best experience in school. And Brett is able to really connect with them. I visited his classroom a couple of weeks ago. He had just come off the news interview about the merger study and he was being referred to as a local celebrity. And I went in, they were busting his chops a little bit. It was pretty funny. They kept making him show it up on the smart board. So he definitely is connected with those students. And, and so I, I'm appreciative of all that and I feel like it's, it's a good time to share some good news. That's all for me.
Thank you. Mr. Dawkins, you have one more thing to do because you can't make this up. My phone apparently just died, so I do not have Mr. Elder on the call anymore. So you now need to take over and give him a call.
I'm gonna call him right now.
That's right. Good team effort on this call today. Can't make it up, dead. Okay. Yep, there it is. Happy two thousand twenty right there. That about sums it up.
Mr. Elder? All right, we've got you here. Christine's phone died, so I've got you here on my phone and it's your job now to wrap things up.
This has been an exercise in my. We don't have the floor because folks did submit their questions to Ms. Ors. One quick question.
That is correct, yes. Task replaced the former. They made it more difficult. They also changed the name.
And, and that's what I want to underscore that for anyone that is out there that didn't realize that the, the task exam now is, is a bit more difficult than the former GED and much more challenging for a student. I commend Mr. Bullish for the work he's done, done rather. Okay, thank you very much. Moving into board discussion, discussion, we'll do a roll call and Dr. Dawson, do you have anything to bring forward?
No, the only thing I want to say is just, I want to echo what Ms. Ors said and, and also really to thank the teachers and the families for all they've done. I can tell you from personal experience and from watching a lot of teachers that this has been a Herculean effort to coordinate the virtual and the in-person education. So I'm so, so grateful for the effort that they're putting in on behalf of our students.
Thank you, and I agree. Thank you, and I agree. I have nothing. Uh, Mr. Farrell?
I agree. Thank, I want to thank you for all the, all the efforts, the, the going to the pivot. It's, it has not been easy decision making all along. Uh, there's so many different pieces that you have to consider as you go, but safety is tantamount. Um, I also want to, uh, give you a lot of, uh, praise for that video that you shared in the Friday report that went out. I think that it was good that you put that together. Often it's, there are lots of questions from the community about what, what's going on? How do you make your decision that, you know, without getting into charts and graphs, I think, I think you were able to nail down at least an understanding for, for the community. And, uh, and thank you. Thank you for putting together.
Uh, we did get a lot of, um, response to that, which we're really glad about. A lot of people did watch it. Um, to our community that's out there, um, and is still available online. It is twenty minutes, but it's a topic that's hard to condense into three and four minute bullets. And so this one, bear with us, it didn't need to be that long, um, because we wanted to make sure we got our points across on that. So thank you.
Yeah, I also want to echo the same, uh, pretty much the same sentiments. Um, I have a seventh grader who is virtual. I have a second grader who is in person. And I applaud everything I have seen revolving around either one of those two kids, uh, the staff. Um, administration have done a wonderful job. And I know behind the scenes, there's a whole lot going on in tech world, so I want to give a special shout out to Mr. Spata. As I do appreciate what he's doing, probably through duct tape and bailing, we're getting through this and we're getting through it very well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Ms. Hogan?
Yes, I just want to say thank you. Um, in particular, I appreciate all the communication, the frequent communication. Uh, working for a different school district and I have two high schoolers of my own, um, I, and our lives are busy as everyone's. I sometimes find it difficult to figure out which district is doing what and keeping my information straight. So the regular communication, you know, from Christine, our administrators, our teachers, um, I really appreciate it. So it does, uh, it does help in a busy day with a lot going on. So keep it coming. Thank you. And, you know, happy holidays, everybody. Stay well.
Thank you. Mr. Ostrander?
Yes, uh, the only thing I, I guess I gotta say is I like to thank, I have two grandsons in, at the Oliver Winch. And I'm very impressed on how they're, I talk to them about school. Uh, they're cousins, which are my two other grandchildren, which are in the Catskills. Or I wish I could say they are, I don't want to compare them, but there's a lot more difficult times down there that it seems like that they're having than my two grandsons up here. And, uh, I congratulate everybody, the administration and the teachers in Southland Falls on the job they're doing, causing that. And, and having said that, I'd like to wish the board, the administration, and everybody, uh, safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Riggy? Mr. Riggy?
Yeah, I'm here. Um.
Sorry.
You know, no. And, um, I appreciate all the communications we're getting from the school. I'm sure the public does too. Uh, I, I know this has been, well, it's highly unusual. It's, it's a tough situation, but I think, I think our staff and our administrators and everyone associated with the school has been doing the best they can to keep, uh, keep our students, uh, learning and, and safe as we go along. I don't know what we're going to be up against the beginning of next year. I hope things get better. Um, I, I don't have any kids in the school or grandchildren in the school or nephews or nieces, uh, so I'm not really into it every day. But, um, uh, I, I know everyone's trying the best they can to do the best they can for our students. And, uh, I really appreciate everyone's efforts and, uh, I appreciate all the work from my fellow board members. And, um, hey, best of the holidays for you and happy new year and let's hope for a better year next year.
Mr. Riggy, since you're unmuted, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Um, when we go virtual, you get to see everybody's houses.
Yeah.
And you have a friend in your background.
Which one?
I can see him. I don't know, I don't know what it is, but I thought maybe you wanted.
Oh, that guy?
Yeah.
Oh, that, hey, who? That's, uh, that's fuzzy.
Wow, that is, it's much bigger than I expected it to be.
This is what happens when you can put a softball through a milk can up at the Great Escape years ago, you know? Try getting this home in the car.
Nice. Sorry, Mr. Elder, I know you can't see it, but it is, it was, I had to, I couldn't help myself. I saw it. I had to know what it was.
It, it's over twenty years old. My kids won't let me throw it out.
I like it. I like it. It's awesome.
One of the best things about virtual meetings. I have to echo the fact that so many of my colleagues have is that I have a granddaughter in Tanglewood. And every day she, we pick her up, she's, she's happy, enthused and going well. The, I guess one of the most notable things I have to mention is, uh, Friday when, at their spirit day, I pick my granddaughter, watching these two individuals, uh, doing, uh, Saturday night fever dances in the parking lot. Mr. Donrick and, uh, Mr. Dylan. Now that was a sight to behold, believe me. If there's no further comments, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, remember Jeff?
Did I get a second?
Second.
Dr. Dawson?
Yes.
Elder, yes. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Fidelli?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Ostrander?
Yes.
Mr. Riggy?
Yes.
Thank you. Pleasant holidays to you all. I'm sorry, I fucked up my zone. I don't know what is wrong.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah, holidays. Take care.
Take care.